Six o'clock on the dot, it's 6:01, I'm late. Well, good evening, my name is Jeff Ashay, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director. Before we get started here, I do want to recognize a few folks that we have here tonight with us. We do have Mayor Pro Tim Lyndon Nash and Councilmember Stacy Wilson here tonight with us. Yeah, let's give them a round of applause. We also have Representative Hugh Shine, I would like to invite to say a couple of words, I think about the upcoming event that we have that we'll be discussing tonight.
Folks, these are very important, and make sure that you have your set and others, okay? I want to commend the leadership in the community. The council members that are here, great, and those of you that are on the panel here. This is important, and my purpose of being here with you is to just let you know that we are here as a team, both from the state level, your local level, your city council clubs, to make sure that on April the 8th, this is executed in a very professional manner and a safe manner for everybody involved. We're going to have an influx of people that are coming in here. I'm hearing this across the district. So my purpose of being here tonight is to say, I joined with you all in the efforts that you're going forth, I applaud what you're doing, and if you need support from my office, we're there to help you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Shine. Yeah, we're very excited about this. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for our community, so we're glad that you're all here to talk about it with us tonight. I do want to introduce kind of our panel, this is the way that we're doing this tonight, we're all going to handle some of the responsibility tonight. So I have Chief Shannon Stevens from the Harker Heights Fire Department, Chief Patel Hawkins from the Harker Heights Police Department, Christina Ramirez from our Planning and Development Department, Gina Pence from the Harker Heights Chamber of Commerce, and Lisa Youngblood from the Harker Heights Library. So again, tonight, we're going to discuss the total solar eclipse that is going to be coming through our area on April 8th of this year. We did one of these this morning, this is, some of this information is going to be tailored to business owners within our community, but if you are a resident and not a business owner, this information is certainly going to be very useful to you and the people that you know that live in this community as well. So we're going to cover as much information as we can, we're here for an hour, we don't want to keep you too late. We're going to cover as much of this information as we can, then we will certainly leave rooms for questions. If you have questions about a particular topic, certainly raise your hand and we'll tackle that. But we will leave about 25 or so minutes for questions at the end, so we can make sure you may be, you have a question that maybe we haven't thought about and other people have the same question, so we will make sure we leave time for that. So I am going to turn it over to Lisa Youngblood to kind of talk to us about what the total solar eclipse is.
Well, I hope that you're excited. April 8th is definitely total solar eclipse day. We had a little bit of a preview with our annular eclipse, but I have been told by those individuals who have been to a total solar eclipse that it's truly amazing. So of course, this is going to be in the middle of the day, and we are going to be excited because the moon is going to actually completely cover our sight of the sun, and it's going to be a really exciting day. I mean, it's going to be a very exciting day, so let's look at kind of what that's going to look like a little bit. I'm not showing you pictures necessarily of the total solar eclipse. I will say that it will be dark, but it won't be completely dark. Remember, we're not in a dark skies area, and we already have a lot of other light and ambient lights, and in fact, if you have any lights in your area, on your street, that are basically come off and on due to it getting darker or getting to look a little more like dusk, those are actually probably going to come on for you. So it won't be totally dark, so you won't have to worry about that. But we're very fortunate, we are in the path of what we call totality. And I just have up here a map of just Texas, this is just Texas. And this, you'll see the red line is where basically we're getting really great, you know, really the best place to view, and some of those places are like Kerrville, one of the top five places is going to be Lampasses. And any place in between the blue lines are going to get some totality, then they're still going to be able to see some. In our case, in Harker Heights, we are expecting the event itself to begin at 12:18. Now, I'm not sure how our scientists have come up with that exact number, but we're excited to have that. This is going to be when the moon is going to appear to just start covering the sun, 12:18. Now, we are going to have in the middle totality and the maximum, like when it's going to be at its best, its peak, it's going to be about 1:38 PM. The entire event will end at about 2:59 PM, that is when the moon has moved across the sun, or that is the appearance, and we'll be able to see all of the sun again. So that duration is two hours and 40 minutes, so that seems like a pretty good time, but actually, that time of totality, when we're not going to be able to see really any of the sun except for the corona, which is strangely always there, we just can't see it because of the sun, but during those four minutes and 11 seconds, we're going to have totality. And that will be the only time, if you're looking directly at the sun, that you can actually take off your glasses, just during that time, because we are, the moon is going to be shading us basically from the sun. Now, I have been asked by many people about our glasses, and they're like, do we have to wear them the whole time? Well, you have to wear them when you're looking up toward the sun, if you're walking from your sidewalk to your car, or if you happen to be driving, at some point in the middle of this event, you don't have to wear glasses at that point, unless you plan to be looking up or if you're going to be stopping often, and at some safe place in order to view, hopefully not the side of the road, because that wouldn't be very safe. So you'll find a lot of different options. So I also wanted you to take a look to see how many places are getting this fabulous event. All the way up the I-35 corridor, and that is very different and very unusual. When we talked at other places, almost all the way up the I-35 corridor, so really Waco's getting it, Fort Worth a little bit, Dallas, so as you go all the way down, even San Antonio's getting a bit of it. So that is very unusual to have one state with so large of an area that is going to be experiencing totality. And I think that we'll talk a little bit later about how that in itself is making us view this event a little different. So what does this mean for us? Well, we have opportunities. We have opportunities to learn about science, we have opportunities to excite ourselves, we have opportunities to be community, we have opportunities to possibly make some money, but we also have some challenges that we definitely want to look at, we don't want to be caught unawares, and we're going to take a look at them. Now, what we know is that people are coming. We don't know how many people, and I am so sorry that I can't give you that exact number, the number keeps changing as we get more and more information, as we see how many hotels are being booked up. Pretty much right now, almost every place in that corridor is booked, especially in, almost every place is booked. We have some short-term rentals that are coming up, and they will continue to come up, so you'll be able to find them, but we know that a lot of people are coming to our area, we've even been told that there are people coming from out of our country to view this, because the number one place in our nation is Kerrville, and then about the number five place, I mean, I'm sure that there's some discussion about it, but about the number five place is Lampasses. And because of where we are located, and we are right on the road of where you can get from I-35 to Lampasses, so we really feel that even though we don't have as many hotels, we don't have as many Airbnbs, so to say, as many campgrounds, that we will be having people come in, mostly on that day. How many? Well, we're not sure. So I'm going to give you a guess. We've heard everything, if you are a place that's not in the top five or 10, you are going to get totality, but it's not necessarily the place where you're going to get the longest bid. It could be anything from one half of your population, so that would be about 17,000 extra people, extra people, to your entire population again, that'd be 34,000, or maybe even more. I've heard as much to two times, but in most of those, in most of those cases, when it was two times your population, you were having big events on the day. Now, we're going to talk a little bit later about some of those very, very exciting events that we're going to have, but on the day, we are not having a huge event like Central Texas College is having, or like Waco is having at the McLean Center on that actual day. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Jeff.
Hey Jeff, before you get started, just for the record, at 6:06, we did have a quorum of the city council president, but no business is going to be discussed. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Christina. Okay, so I do want to very quickly kind of go over some of the resources that we have for residents, for business owners, for everybody. And I want to kind of quickly talk about ways that we can prepare for increased travelers. So that's a lot of extra people here in town. So one of the things that we're trying to do is make this as enjoyable of an experience for our residents as we can, and balance that with making this an enjoyable experience for our visitors. So for residents that can, we are encouraging them to stay home that day. School's not going to be in session that day, I would recommend not being a part of some of the gridlock that we're going to be discussing here in a little bit, there's going to be a lot of people on the roads, it's going to be best to enjoy this, again, once-in-a-lifetime event from home. So one of the things that we're doing to kind of promote that is, and I already forgot what we're calling it, but essentially what it is, a block party toolkit. So we're going to provide people with the opportunity to get some fun activities, we will have glasses available for people that do that, and the idea behind that is to enjoy this event with your neighbors, with people, without having to get in a vehicle and travel somewhere. So if you don't know your neighbors, get to know them through this event, if you do, get everybody together, get one of these block party toolkits, we'll make it fun for people of all ages, especially kids, since they're not going to be in school. At our facilities, so I'm the Parks Director, so for my perspective, from the Parks perspective, we're going to be looking at sites that we think are going to be places that people go, and that's, you know, from my, the way I look at it is, you look at Google Maps, you're going to see Carlvin Park, Community Park, the large places that have parking and space, and so we're going to have additional porta-potties in those areas for the day of. We will also, so an event that we've been doing around this time of the year for the last few years is our Art in the Park event, and we are going to make this, this has always been a one-day event on a Saturday in the spring, we are going to make this a two-day event to kind of capitalize on the increased visitation and also to provide a better program for our residents. So we will be rebranding this from here going forward too, to the Harker Heights Arts Festival, and that will be Saturday, April 6th, and Sunday, April 7th, so it'll be from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Saturday, and noon to 4:00 PM on Sunday. So we will look to increase what we've done in the past for that. But like Lisa mentioned, on the day of, we're going to have all of our staff out at our parks, but we are not going to have specific day-of events. We're just going to be trying to manage crowds where we think that they're going to go. So talking about resources we have available, if you have not taken a look already, Harker Heights does have a website that is specific to the eclipse where you can find information about this from whatever perspective you're coming from. So I won't cover all this information, but please be aware that it is there. Some of the questions that you have, we might be able to answer from this website as well, feel free to ask them still tonight, but a lot of this information is fantastic, and it's very easy to find, it's harkerheights.gov/eclipse. So I'll just click on Tips for Residents here, so you kind of get an idea of what we're looking at. So things that we're telling residents is, this is going to have impact on traffic and local services, and we will talk about that here shortly with Chief Stevens and Chief Hawkins. And we have tips and things for people to remember, so fuel and cash and groceries, so one of our recommendations is that you make sure to prepare for this like you would if this was a very, very busy holiday, is kind of the way that we're looking at that. So this is obviously on a Monday, which actually makes it kind of nice, so we recommend filling up your gas tank by the previous, the Thursday before, making sure you have your groceries. A lot of, a lot of places, I think a lot of doctor's offices, a lot of places that do appointments are not making appointments for this day already. If they mistakenly do, I would recommend that you get a different day, or it's going to be a struggle to get there. We'll talk a little bit about cellular service and our opinion of it, but from what we have been told by communities that went through this in 2017, that we don't anticipate any disruptions in cellular service, and so we'll talk about emergency preparedness. But you see, we've got, so for the folks that are not here tonight that might have questions, and when they find out you were here, they ask you questions, you can say, just go to harkerheights.gov/eclipse, and all the answers will be there. So we've even got tips for visitors, so we'll try to get this information out to people that are going to be coming to Harker Heights. So we talk about preparing in advance, what to bring with you when you're here, preparing for if you're not coming here, if you're coming here after Thursday, which is when we told you to stock up, they may get to the store and there might be some shortages on some things, so making sure that what they bring with them, they are prepared to spend for the whole weekend. We're going to talk about being business-friendly, but, and how we can do that tonight, but again, there's some information on this page about what businesses can do specifically to prepare. We've got some information about our events and programs, and we'll be adding to that as we go to include this event tonight, and then some safety tips, and that includes some of our emergency contacts, what to look for when you're looking for solar eclipse eye protection. One of the issues in 2017 was people mistakenly getting glasses that were fake, that were not going to be safe, so making sure that you're getting the right glasses, because you are looking at the sun, and so you want to make sure you're using the right stuff. And then some tips and tricks on transportation, travel, parking, and then medical services and first aid. So there's a lot of really, really helpful information here, so again, I would recommend that for the folks that were not here tonight, or if you want a little bit of a refresher on the things that we're going to talk about tonight, this website is a fantastic resource, so make sure that you use it. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Stevens and Chief Hawkins.
Hi, good evening. What I would like to do tonight is make sure everyone leaves here with peace of mind. One of the aspects that we're really kind of, are starting to discover is there's a lot of information out there, and not all of the information is factual. So with that, all of our preparation from a public safety standpoint has been centered exclusively on facts of what happened largely in Kentucky and Wyoming with Irving events from 2017. We know we're going to have a traffic backup, what we know from the population that comes to see these events, we may see a little bit of a slow surge up until the day of the eclipse. However, what we're forecasting is the majority of our problems are going to be the mass exodus after the event, when everyone's returning back to their homes. I've been here long enough to know that there's really no scientific basis for the backup on 14 and 35 at different times of day, but we are completely anticipating that 14 is going to be problematic, and with that are going to be all the feeder roads with all the cars trying to get to 14. On top of that, it's also 2024, a lot of the people on the road use various navigation apps, whether it's Google Maps, Apple Maps, Waze. These services have a great connectivity to where they communicate with other drivers on the road and try to forecast and plan roads less traveled, and try to get the commuters on there. However, it really doesn't do a great job of picking out the best of roads. So we have a lot of towns in our suburb, like Modoc and stuff like that, that may look great from an Apple Maps perspective, but that does not mean it's a good road to go to 14. So with that, even some of the bigger roads that we plan on, like 2410 being backed up, we're also anticipating a lot of the other residential roads being backed up from these services. But again, we're really planning for that to be after the event on Monday. So with that, the peace of mind aspect, I want to communicate with you guys, we know we're going to have access problems, the fire department, what we do is we position all of our resources around the city like chess pieces, and we're putting extra pieces on the board, just to make sure that as we have a population surge, which means we're probably going to have an increased call for service, that we have those resources available. We've made some minor changes to our operational plans to make sure that the turnaround time between those calls, we're able to get our courries back in service, and that way they're available for you guys. Trying to think if I left out anything from this morning, if not, I may have to piggyback off of Chief Hawkins, but with that, I'm definitely here for questions, and I'll turn the mic over to Chief.
I wanted to say something really quickly, so I think you hit on something I'd said earlier this morning, and I missed. So most of what we're talking about in terms of this massive increase in visitation, we're talking about day of, so we're talking about Monday, April 8th, that many people being here. We do anticipate people trickling in essentially, starting to get here probably Thursday or Friday, and it will increase day-to-day, but we're, from all the research that our city has done and our community partners that have talked with communities that went through this in 2017, an overwhelming majority of the folks that are coming for this will be coming here the day of. So we anticipate, most of the things that we're talking about with traffic and things like that are Monday, April 8th, not throughout the entire weekend.
And one thing that's working to the advantage of a public safety and accessibility aspect is Harker Heights is not, we don't have any planned viewing events. We know CTC and Levine is having events, so anything that we get, maybe some of the residual through traffic from those events and things like that. But again, our problems we're forecasting starts about that 2:00 in the afternoon when everyone's trying to get home. Chief?
Good evening, everyone. I do want to reiterate what Chief Stevens said, we want our residents to feel comfortable and know that we'll be able to respond to anything that we need here in the city. I do want to encourage everyone, and we're pushing that out, to only call 911 during emergencies during that timeframe. We'll push out our number, but we do have a police department number for non-emergencies, and that number for anybody who's here is 254... There we go. And so we are expecting a lot of increase of traffic and visitors here, but we are adjusting our staff accordingly. For the business owners that are here, parking lots, we're encouraging you, if you don't want extra people in your parking lots, to get barricades, get cones, do those things to secure your parking lot, because that's definitely going to be on the responsibility of the business owners during that timeframe. We're not expecting any road closures either, we're going to, traffic and everything is just going to be slow, so we're definitely encouraging our residents, if you can, to stay home, get your shopping done early, if you forget your milk on that day, you might just have to go milkless for that day, or expect a long delay. Dana Peak Park, some people have asked this question about Dana Peak Park, they'll actually be open for a limited amount of visitors, and we'll have staff and signage associated with it, so when they get full, to let you all know that they're full. Another question that we are, we have fielded often was, is there going to be an increase in crime? People are concerned about crime, especially our local citizens, but through the research that we have seen is this group of travelers that go watch the eclipse are typically a peaceful group. But again, we want to reassure you that we're preparing, our staff is constantly preparing, and we're going to be here to handle business like we always do.
During this morning's session, we had Bob Reinhardt from Bell County Emergency Management. He's not here to make it this afternoon, so I'm going to go ahead and cover his part. He covered a lot of the concerns regarding the cellular coverage. I just want to let you know that just like what we're doing in terms of plusing up our resources, so is Bell County Communications as it relates to adding extra 911 dispatchers, they're going to be fully staffed that day. There are expectations of an increased call volume, but there's really nothing in our plans, our forecast, or in our Rory resume that we're going to have a downing of the 911 system or a complete overload of the cellular system, but we are anticipating some slowdowns. And also, just like what Chief was saying, for all the non-emergency and service calls, please make sure you don't call 911. And one option that is available through Bell County is you can text 911 as opposed to calling 911, so if you're on your cell phone, that uses less data, which will free up the overall system to have a little bit more accessibility.
And Jeff, if you'll switch to the next one. So from a business standpoint and from a residential standpoint, one of the things that we're asking you to do is if you plan on having a bigger block party, or a business that you're going to invite people in to come into your parking lot, or you're going to throw an eclipse party at your business, to call and let us know. There will be no charge for a special event permit, but we're asking for you to file one. The city utilizes mygov now, and on the eclipse website after today, we'll have some handout there, a PDF, where that walks you through the process on how to apply for that special event permit. If you're not comfortable utilizing the online system, you can email us at planning@harkerheights.gov, and we will help you with that and make sure that that's registered. What that does is it helps us pre-position our resources, lets us know where we may anticipate some larger gatherings to be occurring around the city.
We do have a step-by-step guide printed out on the table right over here, so if you are interested in filling out the information about a special event, there's a step-by-step guide on how to do that.
Great, thank you. Also looking down, there are some things that we are going to have less code enforcement the period Friday through Tuesday, in regards to especially those businesses in our overlay district who have more stringent standards. We're going to allow them to have the feather flags and some balloons, stuff to draw people in to their business. We will not be doing code enforcement on those items during that time. We also will not be able to do code enforcement on parking on the grass, so if you have a vacant lot, especially along a major arterial, so a text road, a larger, wider road where people may be coming through and they use it as a pass-through, please know that you are responsible for securing your own property. We do anticipate that if people drive up and they're going to be on the grass, that they're probably just there for that Monday and then heading back out. But you do, as a landowner, want to protect yourself for liability reasons, and make sure that you've taken that into account with your parcel. Let's see, there will be a few other things that are up here, things like inflatables and temporary signs, we're going to allow those, just let us know you're putting them up. That just helps overall to keep, again, to keep track of what's going on around our city, what type of events we're having. There are a few things from a business standpoint that we want you to keep in mind. Most of our businesses here are registered, and so we don't have a problem with that, and if you're going to do cottage law cooking, so cooking something from home, selling it that day, and then you're not doing it anymore because you're just providing it for your customers that day, absolutely okay on our end, we're not going to require you to go get a permit. However, if you have a mobile food truck that has your active flame or your hood and needs a vena hood, you must get that inspected prior to that day by our fire marshal. Your Bell County permit is not going to be enough here in Harker Heights, we do have a separate permit that you must get. And then our short-term rentals, that ordinance passed last year, and we've started to see an increase in the number of individuals registering their short-term rentals. We have some safety items that were passed by our city council that help protect not only you, but those that are coming and visiting our city, and it makes it consistent across the board. So we ask that you come and visit our office or visit the website in regards to the short-term rentals. And while we're talking about food and other types of business things, some things that you may want to be aware of is, right now, we are not sure if there will be garbage pickup on that day. It may act as a bad weather day where they delay it, or right now, the plan from Waste Management is for them to start and see how far they get. So if you are a business, I know, I know, we're working with Waste Management still, so please give us some time on that. That might be one of the things that changes up there. So if you are a business who doesn't get the trash picked up on the weekend, and it's usually Monday morning, or maybe even Tuesday morning, have a plan in place on what to do with your garbage, because we are not sure yet of the service that will be able to be provided on that day, on that Monday. Another thing to think about that was mentioned this morning, and I might be stealing a little bit of Gina's thunder, is think about scheduled deliveries. So if you are a business that gets deliveries every day, there may be some conflict with those that are parked in your parking lot because they're here visiting temporarily. That semi may not be able to get through traffic in the same timeliness that they normally do. So earlier, when Jeff talked about some delays to goods, that might be factored in to your business plan and how much you're ordering in advance of this event. I will say that we also went through, and we have been talking to the contractors, we are not allowing any construction to occur around public utilities, so that's water, sewer, storm drain, gas, and electric, that no construction activity can occur around those public utilities from Friday through Tuesday, so that includes the fiber companies. We have found that we don't want to focus on emergency response for those items while we're making sure that we have capacity and maintain our services for all of those that are here in our city as well as those that will be visiting, and so that's just one of the protection measures that we've put into place. We did go door-to-door to contact all of our major businesses that are along our thorough fairs, so think text roadways, and that have bigger parking lots, to notify them of this meeting and the eclipse. What we, the reason that this was originally built as a business-type meeting, not just a residential meeting, is because we a residential meeting, is because we wanted to get that input from our business community. How do you think this is going to affect you? What do you need from us? Will you be closed? What we found is that a lot of our businesses, a lot of the smaller businesses, are closing for this day. And Gina will get into some of the particulars of some items that you might want to think about. And so when that occurs, you know, we're thinking of ways, okay, well, what other services? What can we do to make sure that our citizens are aware? And when we went through, we talked with our city attorney, and we will be posting events up on the eclipse page with a nice disclaimer. We'll give them a link to go to your website, or your social media page, and it'll say, leaving City of Harker Heights website, heading to a private account, or something similar. But we want to advertise what it is that you're doing in our community, to help bring in people to your businesses and your areas. One of the best ways to stay informed about what's going on with the city and the changes such as garbage, is to sign up for the Stay Informed registration that's on the city's page. So on the city's main page, there's a little box in the middle of the page, and it says, Stay Informed, and I believe it has a light bulb on it. You can click on that and receive emails. Emails go out all the time about what's going on in the city, what changes are in the city, when City Hall's gonna be closed. Right now, it is planned to be open, I believe, on that day, but that's subject to change. It may be limited in capacity at that time. Again, all of that's dependent on staffing and what else is going on as we get closer. There's a lot of unknowns with this, and we've looked at other communities in other states, but with how different Texas is, it's hard to compare that to what we have going on here. And with that, I'll turn it over to Gina.
Okay. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Gina Pence of the Harker Heights Chamber of Commerce, and I also want to introduce Katie here. Katie handles our special events, and the eclipse obviously is falling under Katie. So she's gonna have her contact information, and I believe we've got that here at the end of the slide as well. Really, I want to concentrate on, what is that economic impact? What does that look like for us? Just those of you that are not aware of the tourism, what our visitors spend when they come into a community, they spend, on average, per person, $144. So we have the potential for a huge economic impact to our community. So I'd like to know how many here this evening are here for a business in Harker Heights? Show of hands? Okay. So, thank you all, and I hope that you are going to walk away tonight with a few ideas that may help you in keeping your business thriving that day. In speaking to some other communities that's gone through something very similar to this, they shared a few ideas, and I'm gonna kind of talk about that real quick here. We want to encourage promotional-themed items, and just something for you to think about. Sometimes, especially if you're a restaurant, and if you've got a huge influx of people that are gonna be coming in, is your staff gonna be able to maintain a full menu? Are you gonna be able to get people in and out of that business in a timely manner without having long lines? Think about that. And earlier today, and I'll still use that, because I love the analogy of using Barbie when the movie came out, and everybody got on the pink bandwagon, right? I mean, if you had pink, I didn't care what it is. If you had a cocktail, a sandwich, it could be a clothing item, if it was pink, people wanted to come get it. And we really feel that this is going to impact the same way with the eclipse. So if you can be a little creative, and you wanna come up with some of those great ideas, we'd love to help you promote and share those. Another thing we want to talk about is business-friendly. And what does that mean? Well, I'm gonna use the example that I used this morning, and this has happened. So you think about this when you're out visiting yourself into a new community, and maybe you've got your children with you, or maybe you've been shopping all day, you can't find a public restroom, and you want to use a public restroom in a local business or a restaurant, but maybe you're not gonna purchase anything there, or you're unsure. Are you gonna allow people to come in and use your restroom? Do you have a policy in place? Are you gonna put a note on your door? Are you going to speak to your business neighbors and ask how they are handling that? Because if they are allowing everyone to come in their door to use the restroom, and you're the only business in that strip center that says no, you're not gonna look really business-friendly. And you may be, but the perception is there. So I just kind of want you to think about a few of those things, as we're getting prepared for the possible huge influx of potential customers that could come in. Handling your parking area, we've all talked about that. Are you going to do something in your parking lot? Christina's kind of giving you the guidelines and rules that the city's going to be allowing, but remember, if you don't own that parking lot, you still need to get with either your landlord or the owner. We're not telling you that you have free access to hold an event without checking through your proper channels if you are renting your space. I want to make sure that we're kind of following up with that. And we've talked about the internet. Now, that could be a huge, it could be a huge problem for especially our small businesses. A lot of our businesses here do not have landlines. So if the internet is spotty, or if for some reason it does go down, you have a long line of people that are waiting to check out, you know, are you gonna have to tell them, I'm sorry, I can't, it's cash only? So you need to be prepared and have a backup plan. Just don't assume, because it's working, that it's going to continue working that day. I'm not trying to scare you. What I want to do is make sure that I'm informing you of possibilities that could happen. So have a plan together for all of these things, and speak to your staff. If you are corporate, you know, go back to your corporate and explain to them what's happening. Market Heights was here earlier today, and of course, she handles a lot of corporate real estate there in Market Heights. And she was saying, most of the corporate office are not even aware of what's going on here with this particular event. So communication is key. And again, just to make sure that you've got a backup plan. And we're happy to visit with you, and kind of guide you, and give you some partners if you feel that you need that additional access. And let me see if I... One of the other things that we talked about this morning that I want to bring up again is a big part of small business, even large business nowadays, is to-go orders. How many of us either go and pick up an order that we place, or you get it delivered? There could be an impact, because we're talking about possible traffic. So just think about that, and be in conversation. If you do have an order service, talk to them, communicate with them, just like we're telling you about your delivery of your goods and supplies. As you're speaking to whoever that delivery company is, do the same thing on your delivery services for your product that your customers or the consumers are purchasing. Make sure I didn't miss anything else. And another big one that came up today, for some folks that are going to change your business hours, or maybe possibly you've decided that you want to close your business. I hope that's not the case. I really think that you can really thrive and make a great economic impact throughout that long weekend, even the day of, as long as you're prepared. But make sure that you're updating your social media pages, your website, Google. People will be using those apps to find, you know, what is the closest restaurant that they're looking for, whether they're searching for pizza, or whatever it may be. Make sure. Sometimes we update one and we forget to update the other. Social media is a big driver for all of us, and we, you know, Maps, those apps, Google Map, I'm sure is going to be another one that's gonna be very highly used. So please make sure to update that. Any promos and specials that you are having, please reach out to the chamber and to the city, and share that information, so we can help you. We can't help market if we don't know what you're doing. So communicate with us, we're gonna do that. All this information will also be shared with our local hotels, the RV parks, where we know people are staying, we will try to get that information to them. We have a tourism umbrella underneath the chamber, and we do a lot of welcome bags for our visitors. If you get us the information, that will go in the bag. So just make sure that you're communicating, and again, you all saw Katie up here, and her information is right here, too. You're more than welcome to email her, or she's got her business cards with her tonight as well. Thank you.
All right, so we will open it up for questions. I do want to say just two quick things. So one, just please remember that, so we keep referencing 2017, and obviously, the main question that everybody has is visitation, you know, how many people should we expect here in town? And from all the research, again, that many, many, many agencies have done, the numbers that we've said tonight are what we anticipate, but those states that were involved in 2017, the two most highly sought-after sites were in Wyoming and Kentucky. And so it is not apples-to-apples, so we're doing the best with what we can. So you saw the path of totality, so it's gonna create some interesting, you know, kind of variables, bless you, on the number of people that we expect here in town. Because while there's more people in Texas than in Wyoming and Kentucky, it's also hitting a lot of sites where population is high. So you could go to Waco, you can go to Dallas, you can go to Texarkana, Kerrville, parts of San Antonio. So it's gonna be really interesting to see, but again, from all the research that not just our city has done, but from what other partners of ours have done as well, is we're anticipating that one and a half to twice your population. So remember that that's what we're prepping for. I also want to say, for those that have questions specifically about how this is gonna impact residents, or if you have any friends or family who have more questions about this, we are gonna have an eclipse open house at our Outdoor and Science Expo. That is on February 10th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the recreation center. So we'll have a ton of different things going on related to the outdoors and to science that day, but in the lobby, we will have the departments represented to answer questions about city response to the eclipse, a lot of the information that we've talked about tonight. So that's a long period on a Saturday morning, in a couple of weeks, where people will have the opportunity to ask questions as well. So if you'll help us spread that information out. And with that, I will open it up for questions. I think we've got 6:45. Go ahead, Al.
In your research with other communities, was trespassing an issue, and were trespassing to be an issue on that day? Would you have the ability to respond to it?
So I'll answer the first part. In our research, no. So the cities that we talked to had no increase in crime, or reports of crime, or anything like that. I'll let Chief Hawkins talk about what our central response would be.
Again, to reaffirm, we hadn't had any information that we've had, that the past eclipse sites have had any issues with criminal trespassing, but we will respond to anything that we have here.
And I do want to reiterate, too, one of the reasons we want people to stay home, and this is kind of the fun part, is that this is a truly unique experience that people will remember for the rest of their lives, as long as they are not stuck on the side of the road, looking out their window. So that's kind of what we're trying to entice our residents to do, is enjoy this day. I was not super into the eclipse, I had to take some convincing about how cool this event is, but after talking to people, they have said, no, this is something that you're really gonna remember. So make sure to remember that. We had a question back here.
I have. It's not a question, it's a comment. We have relatives coming in for this event that went to the last eclipse in Wyoming. There's nothing in Wyoming. If you haven't been there, there's nothing in Wyoming. A two-hour trip, it took them two hours to get to their location, took them over seven and a half hours to get back home. That's how much traffic we are likely to have. I just wanted to make everybody aware that we know firsthand from our relatives, we're running a lot of traffic, which would be a great thing for small businesses and larger businesses, but to be aware. And I don't know about y'all, but I'll be stocking up.
Yeah, and it goes back to what we were talking about earlier, where it's a slow build, right? Obviously, most of the people are gonna drive in that morning, but it's a slow build from about Wednesday, Thursday, all the way to Monday, and then it's almost like a football game ending. Everyone's leaving at the same time.
Right, and they couldn't stop and stay anywhere, not just because it was just open and it isn't a lot, but there's nothing available. So you have to keep going, even if it takes you all night. So just to be aware.
Yes, thank you. You had a question.
You mentioned the art going an extra day, so you're saying you're going to have the art activity in the park, despite wanting residents to stay home?
So the art activities are on Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah.
Yes, so we won't have any special programs or activities. We will be fully staffed. It's blackout day for our staff, they're there, but that is for essentially making sure that everyone has got what they need at our parks. The art festival will be Saturday, Sunday, and then the eclipse is Monday.
Any chance hotels could give a discount for people staying the next two days without the traffic?
That's not for me to answer.
January hotels were already 500 rooms. Last year, we were 400.
Go ahead.
The two-day art festival that you're talking about, is that like a retail situation, or is that just like a...
So it's the same criteria for art in the park, so it's handmade art. Adam, I'm gonna mess up what our requirements are.
Yeah, so it is handmade art, so it has to be either handcrafted, art-related items, so if you made handcrafted earrings, as long as it's art-related, or if you like the coasters, and it's like pictures of art, famous art, but you do all the coloring and designing, that would be acceptable. And of course, food, we allow food vendors.
And they get to sell their art?
Yes.
Correct. We encourage it. Go ahead.
Can I make it edited on the website?
Yes, so we have some of that information on the website, and we'll have some on the parks page specifically. About the arts festival you're asking? Yeah.
Do you have to be ready in the morning to be able to speak?
Sure, absolutely.
They'll do something for the English, they've got to be a bit more encouraged. In Europe?
I guess it works.
Okay.
Could Markier like say they were gonna have the station there, the police station, and help there in the parking lot, maybe during the holiday?
Oh yeah, we were supposed to be repeating questions, I'm sorry, Adam. So the question was, is PD gonna have the station at Market Heights?
We won't have the command post like we normally have during the holidays, we won't have that at Market Heights at that time.
Everyone that asks a question, please repeat it. I'm just kidding. That's my fault.
You talked about setting up additional board parties at the parks and everything at the family park, the 2410. Any contingencies for overflow parking and stuff like that?
Yeah, we're just not gonna be, you're talking about like at a community park and things like that.
On those lots across the street.
No, we're just not gonna have the staff to be able to manage it, because we're gonna be keeping on top of restrooms and things like that. So, yeah, so any parking outside of actual designated parking won't be available in the parks. Is that it? Oh yeah, the question was, sorry. Are we gonna have...
I'm sorry, I didn't prevent my moment.
Yeah, that's my fault, don't say sorry. Are we gonna have additional parking in addition to what we have designated at our parks? Go ahead.
Now, you're talking about the influx of people coming. I watched the annual one last year, there was a lot of people, like I said, is there a plan in place for recovery after that? Because you know, a lot of people love to discard their trash on the ground, rather than finding trash cans.
Yeah, so the question is essentially about cleanup afterwards. So yes, we will have our staff, and I know additional, not just park staff, but additional city staff, will be available for cleanup efforts. I mean, we're gonna do as much as we can day of, because like I said, we're gonna be there at our facilities, and then we will coordinate with adopters, street, and all of those groups the following day, Tuesday in that week, about cleaning up where it's needed. So we will make sure to pinpoint the areas that become an issue. That was a question we had for the cities that went through this in 2017, and that was another thing that we were reassured, again, not necessarily apples-to-apples, but we can only, you know, plan for what we can plan for. They said they did not have nearly as big an issue with that as you would think, given the crowds, so that people were pretty clean after that. But we will be prepared. Any other questions? Okay, y'all, well, great questions. We appreciate y'all being here tonight. I think city staff will hang out for a little bit if you've got questions you want to ask us individually, but we look forward to a great day on April 8th, and our contact information is right up here, so make sure to record that if you need it, and thank y'all for being here tonight.